Third order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for those who have passed away in our community. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Dunningham?
Here.
I'd just like to make a note that city solicitor Sean Gallagher or council solicitor Sean Gallagher will be participating via phone this evening. Mr. Waldenberg, please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, correspondence received from OECD regarding code enforcement report for council complaints dated April 26, 2022. 3B, correspondence received from Ronald R. Beer, Chief Administrative Officer, Geisinger Northeast, dated April 19, 2022, regarding GCMC expansion. 3C, answer advisory overview of the proposed City of Scranton ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, spending plan, received April 26, 2022. 3D, overtime review for all departments as provided by city controller dated April 27, 2022, for the period January through April, 2022. 3E, minutes of the Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission hearing held on February 16, 2022.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a couple. So first of all, I want to apologize for not being here last week. We had some family sickness. I just played it safe on behalf of everybody else. So but I had a couple announcements last week that I that I'll share with you this week. Two weeks ago, we had three firefighters that were injured, so I want to wish them well. I hope they're doing fine with after they got injured at the Emmett Structure Fire, Emmett Street Structure Fire. And then we also had a Trailblazer, it was in the paper, a Scranton woman, first to hold a high rank in a fire department. I'd like to congratulate her, wish her best of luck. Her name is Scranton Fire Department Lieutenant Caroline Jansek. And she, like I said earlier, she's the first woman to earn this rank, so that's fantastic. And then we have another firefighter who retired, who retired the other day, finished his last assignment at Truck Ford. His name is Captain Bob Lucas, and he served the city for 30 years, so I wish him well. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Do any other council members have announcements at this time?
Yes, I have one. I made an announcement about it last week, but I did get a start time. So the Green Ridge Neighborhood Association will be hosting a cleanup at the islands on Kapausav and Electric Street. All volunteers are welcome. It starts at 9:00 a.m. and it finishes either at noon or when they complete their work. So it'll be this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. Thank you.
I wanted to mention the diaper collection this weekend, May 6 and 7. I'm going to ask Mrs. Jeffries if she would bring that up when she speaks because I left the sheet at home. I meant to bring it, but oh, here it is. Okay. So the Mother's Day baby pantry collection, that's Saturday, May 7 and 8, from 10 till 3:00 p.m. at Naug Park. Diaper sizes newborn, four, five, and six, pull-ups, 4T, 5T, all sizes accepted, baby wipes, baby food, cereal, and formula. And they're also receiving blankets, diaper bags, pacifiers, baby bottles, infant and toddler car seats. No clothing, please. Okay? Thank you.
Do any other council members have announcements at this time?
I just wanted to wish all the moms out there and caregivers a Happy Mother's Day on Sunday.
I better say that as well.
Yeah.
Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there.
Happy Mother's Day.
Yes, and those that serve as the role as mother, thank you.
I'd also like to wish everybody a Happy Mother's Day. Congratulate Mr. Lucas on his retirement from the fire department. And also today is Teacher Appreciation Day, so I'd like to thank all the teachers out there who play an important role in our children's lives every day. And that's all I have. Mr. Waldenberg?
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First on the list is Joan Hoda-Wanitz.
Joan Hoda-Wanitz, Scranton. Can you update us on the status of the negotiations on the three union contracts?
They're still ongoing.
Did you get any feedback on the billable hours, anything, you know, how many times they've met, when they've met?
So we got it. Our solicitor is going to touch base with Mr. Cotilla, who's acting city solicitor, to just make sure there's nothing that needs to be redacted before we're able to put that out there.
Okay. I just hope that this whole process will be wrapped up before Labor Day, but I doubt that it will. Item 5C, nomination of the Finance Director, Attorney Matthew Dominus. I hope I've pronounced that correctly. My understanding is he's the only one who applied for the position. And I was looking at the backup, the list of qualifications that the city was looking for and his resume. And I'm not comfortable that he has the requisite skill set to fill that position. He's a lawyer. Nothing against lawyers, Sean. You hear that? Nothing against lawyers, but, you're welcome. But, you know, I have many physicians in my life, and I wouldn't expect any of them to become the Finance Director as qualified as they are as doctors, or lawyers, or whatever. The backup says that the preferred training, experience, knowledge, skill, and abilities is a master's degree in accounting, finance, business, or public administration, and one year of experience in public accounting. He doesn't have that. In fact, his resume ends in October of 2021, so I have to assume that for the last six months, he's been unemployed. I know he's worked with Pell, but I don't think, there are many people who've worked with Pell, but I don't think that alone qualifies them to be the Finance Director for the city. And I hope we're not doing this because he's the only one that applied, but I think you need to take a long, hard look at his qualifications. It's not the place for on-the-job training, especially for a position that's only going to be there for one year. I don't know what he will contribute. 5E, the ARCA plan, that I found to be a little confusing and a little bit disappointing. Looking at the backup, the purpose apparently is to quote, "use the award funds that fit into one of the following four categories." Now, the first three categories have to do with the impact of COVID-19 on the city's finances and operations. And the fourth one, which I found very interesting, was to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. Now, when you look at the breakdown of financing, the proposed budget allocation vies the actual cost. In the first four categories, it seems to be approximately half of the proposed budget, which makes sense since we're getting allocations in two lump sums. But for the fourth one on infrastructure, the proposed allocation is $21,730,897, but the actual cost is only $1,142,500, or 5.3% of the allocation. And that was like a red flag to me. And one of the reasons, of course, is one of the issues we've been kicking down the road for a long, long time, since 2016, is stormwater. And so I would like some feedback down the road as to what you're all going to do about infrastructure, especially stormwater. And if during fifth order, more, eighth order, you could give us the status of zoning ordinance, which has been kind of laying there in eighth order for many, many weeks. Hopefully, that thing is going to be wrapped up before you go on recess in August. It's been a long, long time. And hopefully, there'll be another session for public comment when you advertise the changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Kristin Zanis.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kristin Zanis. I'm here again in reference to the pocket park in downtown Scranton. I know City of Scranton, you know, many people probably think myself and my mother and everyone else in my house had gone away from talking about the cement plant that was there. Just because the cement plant is gone, because they moved to Archbold, doesn't mean that we aren't. I had a dog that died. My grandmother passed away. I, myself, including my mother and another family member, have white lung because of the cement plant. The many previous administration that, you know, the mayor at that time didn't see a problem with the building being put up there in a residential area. That's for an industrial park. I mean, you're talking about cement plant that goes in an industrial park, not in a neighborhood next to a bunch of houses. When I lost how much time of high school in 2007, 2008, because I couldn't sleep at night, because all I heard were forklifts moving back and forth. People, you know, I understand some people don't speak English. I understand that. But, you know, when they weren't speaking English, they had no, they acted like they didn't understand what I was saying when I told them it was about 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock at night. I mean, I can't, I still can't comprehend. I'm going to keep coming here. I know it's apparently set in stone that they're going to name it after previous administration, previous mayor at that time. I can't see the logic to that. I mean, I don't know when this pocket park is going to be done, or if they're going to have like, you know, like at many places, they have a, you know, where they cut a ribbon for it, I guess you would say. I don't know if either one of you can tell me when this is going to be finalized, what if this year or the next year?
So the plan right now is they're testing the soil that's going to go in and fill it, and then once that's done, the bids are going to go out for work to be completed, hopefully by the end of this year.
They want to test the soil. They should have came to where I live. It's still bad as it is there. I mean, this is a pocket park. I understand, you know, you don't want kids going there and getting hurt. That I understand, but...
Yeah, but because of the remediation that needed to be done on that property, they have to make sure that there's clean fill going into the hole.
I mean, right now, where I live, where the cement plant was, it was in Green Ridge. You know, at that time, I think they should, they should have tested the soil afterwards before they put in a senior high-rise right to the left of where the building is. I mean, I don't know if they did, but, you know, there's another senior high-rise going up there now. I think it would be in their best interest if they test the soil. I mean, I, I'll keep coming here every Tuesday, but I know it's, you know, it's not going to go anywhere, but if you guys read back in papers many years ago, you will find articles about that building, along with, you know, complaints from myself and my mother and a few other people there. I talked to a neighbor, I think it was two days ago, a day ago, that was down the street from me. I don't, they must not have heard, but they didn't know that it was going to be renamed after that mayor. They're not too happy about it, just like I am. I mean, you know, I understand that they rename things after people. I understand that, you know, memorial of people, you know, people that have helped in different ways or something they have done, but this is no laughing matter. Just because the cement plant is gone, doesn't mean the problems still exist. They still do. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next on the list is Norma Jeffries.
Good evening, Council, Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And thank you, Mr. King, for mentioning the drive-up that we're having this weekend up at Naug Park, and I hope to see a lot of the residents of Scranton there. And I'll be there Saturday and Sunday afternoon, so we're looking for a great turnout and, you know, just to collect a lot of items for St. Joe's. One of the other things that I wanted to mention about the park is that we're always looking for volunteers. And if you go to the website, the Naug Park website, you'll see, if you scroll down, you'll see a slot there where you can volunteer. So, you know, take advantage of that. If anyone wants to know more about the website, I'm always willing to talk about it, but if you have any other questions on a Tuesday night, I'd be glad to answer those questions. The second thing I wanted to talk about was our street cleaning. And, you know, the cinders that they put down in the winter time, that's, it's done its job, but it's very treacherous to a senior citizen when you step out of your car and you lose your foot because you slide on those cinders. So I thought, when is our street going to be cleaned? So I went to the website to see exactly what did the website say about cleaning. So I think I have enough time to read what it says. It says, "New 2022 street sweeping schedule. 2022 seasonal city street sweeping operations will be on a bi-weekly rotating basis during the recycling pickup schedule. Residents can expect street sweeping operations in their neighborhoods on a rotating basis on the days their recycling products are collected, weather permitting. If for some reason sections are not cleaned, it will be revisited the following week by the operations team. We encourage the public to remove vehicles when possible on a rotating basis so the sweeping operations can be as effective as possible within each neighborhood. This activity will continuously rotate throughout the warmer months in an effort to keep city streets, city streets as clean as possible. We appreciate the public's cooperation and patience while we conduct the citywide effort." I don't understand what they're saying. I have no idea. What's a rotating basis? You know, recycling is every week, so are you going to have rotating anyway? I thought it was very confusing. So maybe whoever's in charge of DPW can give some clarification as to when can we expect our streets to be swept, and we'd be more than happy to move our cars so they can do an effective job. But reading this, I can't tell when they're going to come to my street. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Jeffries. Next on the list is Ron Elman.
Hello, Council. You know, I try to be, not to be too controversial, but I'd like to mention my two cents worth about the abortion issue. I've stood here before and had my anti-abortion segments, sentiments, but abortion shouldn't be used as a method of birth control, and these murder clinics ought to be, they exist on tax money. This shouldn't be. As some of you know, Ms. Rosie is an associate pastor. She got credentials. She's not just one of these people that goes nuts on you sometimes. Some time ago, she told me about a local woman that's had eight abortions. If that's not murder, I don't know what is. Eight abortions and multiple abortions aren't unusual in these clinics. That's why we should all hope and pray that this is, that the rumor, or whatever you want to call it, is the truth, that this is terminated. And secondly, this newspaper seems to love to print these letters of Sandra Myers to keep us separate, Yosef Motley, all these people. Their hate-filled rhetoric, week after week, is the same thing. Now, there's a fellow named Dominic Sadad, who is really just completely anti-Israel. This isn't his opinion. He's a racist and anti-Semitic. His letters are pure hate. Now he's found a guy in Honesdale to support him named Steve. I hope he stays up there for crying out loud. There's just no room in our world for people like this. That's just my opinion. Last week, I took, Rosie and me took our little puppy up to the Abingtons and walked around for an hour in the park, and it is so, so nice. The very next day, I went to Naug, and it is in such dire need of repairs. That wooden bridge under the treehouse got big places where they're trying to keep it going. I saw a metal banister laying there. There's no benches to sit on for people at that park. I saw the benches where the car show is. Naug is, to me, it's a jewel in our midst. I often go there and walk my little dog, and while I think of it, I go almost every day up to Western Park, and I don't know if it's the city or the volunteers, but somebody's been working awful hard to clean Western Park and do work on it, and I appreciate it. And right down on the river where I walk the dog, sometimes I feed a fox and I leave the paper bags there, and I pick them up once in a while. Somebody picked up all my paper bags, and I don't know who it is that did it, but I thanked them because it's, I meant to do it, I just didn't because it was winter time. And I appreciate you letting me up here. I've decided not to come to these meetings all the time. I just, I just get all upset sometimes at things I read and hear and see in this city. I love this city. I'm here by choice. I was very fortunate that I had such a good employer take care of me all these years. And I hate hearing such ill things about, about him, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. Next on the list is Lee Morgan.
Good evening, Council, Lee Morgan. You know, just sitting here today, listening to what Ron Elman had to say, I don't know what the Supreme Court's going to do on the abortion issue, but I do know that when that case was determined, I don't know how the court that heard that case decided the way they did, because there's no basis for abortion in the Constitution at all. And everybody's entitled to their opinion, but the Constitution says life and liberty, not just some people, but to everybody. And there's other reasons, but I don't want to spend a lot of time on that issue. You know, I watched the young lady walk up here today and talk about the cement plant. I believe that was done during Chris Doherty's time, and everybody knew it was wrong. And I just think it's time for people at home to realize one thing. The City of Scranton does not need leaders, and the City of Scranton, what it really needs the most, because we had leaders who decided to put Joe Biden's sign up without any concern for the residents of the city and that cement plant. And don't forget that Mayor Doherty is the person who drove the city into distress status during the end of Connor's administration. And we also had leaders on the Scranton School Board who mismanaged it for 40 years that I, or 30 years, between 30 or 40 years that I remember, because the first school board meeting I went to, I was opposed to construction of the new school, and an old elderly woman came to a meeting with a bush gown, a house coat, and a pair of sneakers, and said she couldn't pay any more money. She was almost crying, but the government just doesn't listen. It doesn't, we don't need leaders. We need people who understand what the residents need and work for them, and we've had enough leaders. Take a look at the Scranton Sewer Authority. Pennsylvania American Water is asking for a rate increase, but yet, during the last rain, we had people with stormwater in their basements and sewage, because the leaders of this city voted to sell the Scranton Sewer Authority. But the president, the council, was opposed to it, yet he still introduced it. We have to question how the leaders of the city sold off the Scranton Parking Authority to a, I'd call sold off, to a nonprofit who hired a for-profit corporation to run it, and they're making money. And how we gave the owner of the mall a parking garage and a million dollars to fix it with, and then we spent 30 years in distress. How much money did the PEL make helping the city through that fiasco? These are the kind of leaders we've had, not just here, but look at some of the things that have happened in the state. The most expensive toll road in the world is the Pennsylvania Turnpike. Thank you, Mr. Randell. And, you know, when we talk, when we see a person come in here, that one time was a high school girl who walks in here now as a mature woman who has health issues, and we had the leaders of the city who really have no concern for its residents, because everybody knew that cement plant didn't belong there, but nobody cared. Now we're debating how we're going to spend $68 million of borrowed money and saddling all that debt on the children and future generations, and nothing personal. I don't think you're qualified to determine how to spend $68 million, and neither do I believe the mayor is either. I think we need to talk to the residents. We have a lot of bridges that need to be done. We have a lot of infrastructure that needs to be done. We've got to stop playing these silly games. Okay? You go back to my time as a child, there were 103, maybe 110,000 people living here. This city is a ghost town. The majority of homes are rundown, and it's not the owner's fault. They're being taxed right out of their property, and we're talking about reassessment. We need to cut the size of government, not because we're mean-spirited, but because there's nothing left. We need to start creating industry in our country and bringing people back to work in America, and stop worrying whether congressmen and senators in Washington are invested in China, okay? As people watch their 401Ks fall right to the floor, and quit taxing Social Security 85% because we're out of money. Think about it.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. That exhausts the sign-in sheet for this evening. Would anyone else like to address counsel?
Tom Coyne Menucha. Members of council, I happened to stop by here on Thursday to the building, to this building, and was surprised by a few things. One, there was a police vehicle parked out front, sitting in the parking spot, the 30-minute-only parking spot. The other one was taken over by a truck that was in here evidently for some maintenance. The other one was taken over by a truck that was in here evidently for some maintenance. I understand a truck who's doing, who might do business in City Hall is an issue, but when I went and talked to the police officer at why they were taking up a 30-minute parking space in the front of this building, when there were 10 parking spaces out behind the building, and that was the only location for the populace who has business here to park, I was told, well, the mayor and the administration told us and we've been directed to park out front here. The 30-minute parking for City Hall business is not a reserved police parking space. If they park in any metered parking spaces or behind the buildings, they're certainly not going to get a ticket, unlike the regular population. I understand there hasn't been a lot of business in this City Hall since COVID hit, but there were two or three spaces out front. A police vehicle does not need to be taking up one of those, especially when there's parking in the back that was open for them. I was also surprised when I came in that City Hall seems to be an enclave now. I remember coming here when Jimmy Connors was here. You walked in, you saw the stained glass, you could wander around the building, you could look at the pictures. Now you go to the door down the front and you're met during business hours with a locked key-carded door where you have to call on a phone to have someone come down and take a piece of paperwork from you because you're not allowed in your City Hall. This City Hall is paid for by the public, and these halls and these structures are the public's property. It should not be locked from the people it's supposed to serve. They have, the mayor and everyone else has offices which they can have private with people out front, but the City Hall itself should not be a locked enclave. Looking at Maripool. Two months, people were trapped inside of the Fagety Steel Factory over there, fighting for their own survival. Women, children, and wounded. It took two months and negotiations and the U N. to get them out of there. Why do I bring this up? Because we cannot get funding that we already have here for the hungry in this city. We're sitting on it while other people negotiate and think about how we should spend money when we have money from the government that can go to charities and can go to people who are impacted by the food banks that have been severely impacted by this COVID and now this, the increase in prices. This is not a small thing. In two months, we were able to evacuate people out of a war zone, entrapped behind enemy lines, yet we cannot get money freed to feed our own hungry in the city. There's something seriously wrong about that. And last week, when they came in to show the screens, I wasn't sure. I thought, I thought that I saw, but I wanted to verify it, and the slides are quite correct. We have the community allocation that was put forward and the city allocation on the other side from the surveys. And the final allocation put out there that we're running by is the city's allocation, completely devoid of all the impact by the population. We're going to think about that later. It's opportunities for future alignment. You took a survey, you found out what the population wanted, and the people in charge said, we don't care what the population of this city wants. We're going to do it our way, and that's wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Coyne. Would anyone else like to address counsel this evening?
Marie Schumacher. First, I'm hoping that we will get a report on the outcome of the last Thursday's meeting about the acoustics in this room.
There's, yes, fifth order.
And then, do we have the, tonight, the percent of property owners who have paid 100% of their taxes to date?
I haven't been able to get that, but I'll work on that.
Okay. Now, again, we talked about the pocket park, and I didn't know she would be back, but I have a tendency to agree with her because we have spent about $700,000 on that lot. We had to buy it back because Mayor Doherty did not do what he said he would do to the company who bought the property, and then we had to get the money for whatever's been done and will be done, turning it into a pocket park. But part of the funding for that was, and I don't know what the amount was, I admit to that, but it was from the Mary and William Scranton Family Trust. And again, I don't know what percent of it was, but it was in honor of Mary Scranton. Now, the Scrantons have done a lot, and their names aren't around a lot of places. So the mayor, Doherty, that is, dumped a ton of money up in, he borrowed, we borrowed, what, $82 million when he first came in? And a lot of it was spent at Naog, and it, you know, it's paid off. But I think it would be nice to take the Wyoming and Linden Park and make that in honor of Mary Scranton and find something up at Naog to honor Mr. Doherty. I hope you will consider that. And then, last week after the meeting, the Times Tribune reported that Mr. Priambo was on a leave. Nobody said anything about that during the meeting. Is that, is that going to be a long leave? Or is it personal? Or is it?
It's, it's a personal leave, yes.
It's a personal leave. Paid or unpaid?
I don't know.
Okay. Okay. And then we get down to 5A. We need a lot more meat on those bones. You have to put that in, on the table until we can get more, more meat on what's behind that. That's a lot of money. We should spend it wisely, and we don't have nearly enough information. And one of the things that was, the other thing I don't understand is, are you going to, and I would recommend that you do, require any withdrawal from those funds, come to counsel first? Because otherwise, I don't know how you're going to keep it from going into the corridor. If you have another way, it'd be nice if you shared it. But the other thing I have in mind about these corridors, are we going to have to lease the space, the five feet for the bike, the bike riders? Because the company that got those parking meters and they use the coins that are put into that to keep the parking garages open at a reasonable price, are we going to have to sort of buy them from them? Because they really, they're contracted to have those parking spaces. Do we, no?
Inter, what are you, what are you asking about?
The streets. If you create a bike lane, that's five feet from the curb usually, that means there's not going to be any car parking there. But those parking meters were
So that's going to be
Part of the lease.
That's going to be something that hopefully comes out of our walkability study, but those parking spaces, you know, theoretically, nothing set in stone, would move out and they would still be there. They would just provide protection for a bike lane.
Where are the cars going to go then?
That's going to be a part of the walkability and connectivity study. We don't know what that's going to say coming back, but that's theoretically the idea I believe you are speaking of. Because then the cars provide protection. That's theoretically what the idea is there. I don't know if that's actually going to be the case when that's, but that's going to come out of the walkability and connectivity study.
Okay. Thank you. I'm out of time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address counsel this evening?
Good evening, counsel. Dave Dawson, resident. I have a little newspaper article I want to drop off up here. The subject is about, it's not in our state, but two parents are under arrest because they bought a firearm and left it lay around, and the kid took it to school and shot a few of his fellow students. And I support it entirely. I think anybody that leaves an unsecured firearm around their house with incorrigible kids should be arrested for careless storage of a firearm. There could be four people that were alive if they had more common sense. You have gun safes and all kinds of lovely things to keep them secure. It'd take two or three men to carry a gun safe out of the house. And they should be locked up away so somebody doesn't get, you could at least, in a case of school shootings, eliminate school shootings with that type of enforcement. People should be put on notice. Okay. And once again, that Barron Industries that was down on Dixon Avenue were tax exempt, and they had bumper-to-bumper diesel trucks, flatbeds, all times of the day and night, waiting in line because a lot of diesel trucks are running around with bad batteries and bad charging systems. I worked on a few, not many, because I got really tired of diesels. Anyway, once again, we have our tax problems still, and they seem to be getting worse. So I'd like, someday, I guess I'll have to put it in writing, to get a new percentage on how many, the percentage of properties that are tax-exempt in Scranton. And it is growing. Today in the paper, Tyler Memorial on Route 6 out of Tuncanic is closing their ER. They promised not to close it a while back, and they're closing it anyway. Now, those people will have to either come to Scranton, which is probably 20 or 25 miles. Route 307 is terrible. I think Route 92 might go from there, and that's not a really good route either. And there's a lot of concern about Commonwealth Health because they're not providing the services that they bought the hospitals for in the first place. It's really a shame. And people are going to lose their lives, and we're going to have a choo-choo train of ambulances from different parts of our regional countryside. The subject of choice came up, and yes, I would agree that multiple abortions are wrong, but women aren't provided contraceptive services and men aren't concerned when they're in the mood. And it's really a shame that we can't raise our children and young adults to take responsibility for themselves for those intermittent amorous moments. But at any rate, we had Chick-fil-A and we had that Hobby Lobby and just about everybody else. The Sisters of the Poor would not sign a paper so the government could take up the slack for lack of birth control. And I recommend that everybody do it, and you really shouldn't even have a pregnancy before you're married three years, if you want a pregnancy. Myself, I was always a free agent.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson.
And I'm glad for it. Have a good evening.
Would anyone else like to address counsel this evening? Mr. Waldenberg?
Fifth order, 5A motion.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Just something I mentioned earlier in caucus about the paving projects. I just want to make sure if we could contact Larry West on the DPW to make sure that the roads that are on that paving list, that they address any of the issues as far as drainage, as far as water issues. I just, I don't want to see them paving over areas that are just going to end up, you know, having a problem again immediately, a year or two later. So I'm just hoping that maybe the city engineer or somebody. And it appears as though in some of the areas that I've seen, it looks like they're, they're going to be addressing some of the drainage and pipes underneath some of those roads. But if you could just contact, I guess it would be Mr. West now at DPW. Thank you.
I will, Mr. King.
Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
I guess the only comments I have, I did mention in caucus as well, we spoke with Solicitor Gallagher about reaching out to the city solicitor about looking at the billing, the billing requests that were made over the last two weeks to see what needed to be redacted and how counsel could get a hold of those, those documents as it is public money that's being spent on labor council. And then the second thing is, I'll send it to Mr. Waldenberg afterwards. I did get a call from residents up in West Mountain about the drainage basins. I did send an email over to DPW, and they said it would be on the list, but there hasn't been any action, and I think there's been some, some new things that have occurred at DPW now that it might have got bypassed. So if we could send that email or correspondence as well to DPW about the basins.
I will, sir.
That's all. Thank you.
Dr. Rothschild, any motions or comments this evening?
Yes, I had a few comments. First thing, there were a couple of things I wanted to thank the DPW for. I know someone had brought up the street sweepers, and I did notice at least the street sweepers going around in my neighborhood. Last week, there were a couple of days when I was home, and I, I could hear them, and I looked out, and sure enough, that's what it was. So it was a happy sight for sure, especially around this time of year when we want the streets to be nice and cleaned of all the debris and salt from over the winter. I had also noticed a DPW vehicle and workers that were on Music Street as I was driving along one day, and I know that was a complaint of a previous resident, and it was, it's a really treacherous area to walk. We certainly still need sidewalks on that side of the street, but at least now the cones and the trash and overgrown bushes and shrubs are now cleared, which should make it a little bit easier for people to walk along that, that way. And I would have stopped and actually said thank you, but it's a busy road, as you know, and so that would not be good for me to pull over there. The other thing that I wanted to bring up, a resident had asked me just today about how to obtain a handicap parking permit in front of their property, and they said that they couldn't find information on it anywhere on the website. And so I had spoken with Mr. Waldenberg about this earlier and asked for him to contact IT to see if we can get that information up on the website. And so the process that we have, if the complaint comes in through our office, we can, if the person provides their, their information, their address, then we can send that application to them, and then the application will get sent to the police department for review, and then from there it gets, gets over to DPW so that they could create the sign if, if the application is approved. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Candy, do you have any motions or comments this evening?
I have a couple. So back in April, I made a motion to, it was passed, actually by my colleagues here, to get a timeline and meeting dates for where there was actual physical negotiations, where they actually sat down and negotiated, right? So I'm happy So I'm happy to report, I have that. So what I can tell you, and, and, you know, make note that these negotiations occurred after January 1st, when the contracts were expired. So there wasn't a lot more negotiating going on before that, prior to that. So what I can report to all of you is, the police, all right? They negotiated, physically sat down with the administration, negotiated on 3/15 and 4/7, all right? So that was March and then April, right? Twice, they've only sat down. And then the firefighters sat down and had a physical, you know, negotiations, February 22nd and then March 16th. So they only met twice. And then the Association of Machinists had three negotiations. One was in January 13th, one was February 1st, and February 23rd. So they are the dates and times where they actually sat down and negotiated, all right? Also, about, I don't know, a year and a half, two years ago, I asked if, I asked a lot of questions, but I asked about, do we have employee handbooks? Employee handbooks, you can't hear me? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Are there employee handbooks for the employees, right? I also asked a couple of other questions, but I'm focusing on this one today with regards, you know, so... And I was told a year and a half, two years ago, don't quote me on the date, that we're working on them, right? So, and the reason why I bring it up, because as of recent, I'm getting a lot of questions. Questions that I can't answer, questions that would be answered in an employee handbook. One about the actual city's policy for FMLA leave, right? I know different entities have different policies with regards to how the process starts, how you fill it out. And FMLA is FMLA, you know, God, you know, God forbid people need it. But I'm being asked about the policy or the process. Mr. Waldenberg sent down that, posed that question to administration. I did not receive that yet, right? So in addition to that, people ask me about COVID days. Do we get paid for them? We did, no, we didn't. They're asking about different days, you know, how many of this, how many of that. So they're asking me policy questions that should be in an employee handbook and posted on the website. So I don't know if they forgot about it. So let's remind them, Mr. Waldenberg, could you send a correspondence down to administration and say, hey, where's, where's, how are we doing with the employee handbooks? And in addition to that, I did bring this up the past two years because around budget time, they always come to us and say, well, you know, this one needs a raise, that one needs, that deserves a raise, he deserves a raise. And the past two years, I asked if any formal evaluations were conducted on any employee in City Hall. And I was told no, that they would start that. So, you know, we're into the fifth month of the year. So could you see, also ask, in tandem with the, with the handbook, because that should be in the handbook, how many times you get observed or, you know, evaluated, if that's occurring this year or not? And that is all I have on that. So also, I received an email, actually today, so please bear with me, let me pull it up. And this is regards, this is Mr. Waldenberg. This gentleman is asking about the status in the Hill section on the petition for permit parking in the 1500 block of Pine Street. I just don't remember where we're at with that.
So... Did you get any answer to that? I also forwarded that over to Mr. Waldenberg yesterday, because I got the same email. And Mr. Waldenberg actually got one from, the same email from 311. So he was already looking into it when I forwarded it to him this morning. So hopefully we can get an update on that.
And the stop sign?
Yes. It's embedded in the email? I think we both got the same.
Well, that's fine, it was only sent to me, so I didn't know.
Yes, and the one was only sent to me too, but I guess it was sent to 311 as well.
The traffic officer is going to report back to the chief on both matters tomorrow.
Okay, well, that's great, it's being worked on. And then I have another one on Dale Drive, 800 block of Dale Drive in West Scranton. There's a collapsed drain, okay? And I guess, you know, and I have a picture, I just got this yesterday. There was like a metal, a piece of metal put over it that has moved, and the collapsed drain is getting worse. And it looks really, really bad. So, you know, that's near a school, that's, you know, it's a safety issue with automobiles and children. So could you just check on the status of that? It looks like there's an attempt to fix it. Can we just see where they're at with that? I have a picture on my phone that was sent to me that I'll forward to you.
Thank you, I will, sir.
All right, and that is all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Just some things that came up in citizens' participation. In terms of the zoning ordinance, we are expecting a memo this week in terms of the changes that have been made to date on that. So that then, once we receive that, if we receive it by the end of the week, it will go in third order for next week. But if we don't receive it until the beginning of next week, it won't be in until the following week. But, you know, we're going to review that, and then before we even, it even gets sent down, because with the changes that were made, it will have to be resent to the county for a 30-day review, and then also go in front of the City Planning Commission again before it comes back to us. But as soon as we get that, it will be in third order for, and then we'll review it and see where we go from there. In terms of the street cleaning, we'll request some clarification on that. I know that, you know, on my time on council, we've, I've been pushing for alternate side of the street parking with a schedule. You know, that hasn't happened yet, but there needs to be more clarification on when street, the street sweeper comes out. I know I've seen it on them out randomly on streets, and the cars don't move, so they go in and out, and the whole street isn't necessarily cleaned. So we will reach out to DPW to get clarification on what's on the website in terms of the schedule there. In terms of an update on the acoustics, so the sound guy that has, is, that knows the sound system here is going to work with ECTV first to fix the equipment on the backend that needs to be changed out, and then develop a plan, you know, based off the workings of this room, which way the floorboards work, to reconfigure, get some permanent mics down there, and then also reconfigure the speakers so that everyone in the audience is able to hear. From what he told me, I'm, I'm not an expert on this, and a lot of this stuff flew over my head. But at the same time, if, if, if we move the speakers this way, you guys will be able to hear better, but we might not necessarily. And my response to him was, that was fine, as, because I think that we could hear each other up here all right, as long as, you know, people in the audience are able to hear. So we're hoping that that work could be done during our August recess. That's also dependent on, you know, supply chain and making sure that we get the equipment in, in time to do the work. But that, that is the plan, and they're working with ECTV too, to do some of the backend stuff there. Because we could fix the sound in here, but that might screw up the sound then on TV. And we want to make sure that it's, it's all encompassing, and we're not screwing up one aspect to fix another. In terms of, Mr. Elman, your complaints in the past, this past week, one of the speeding apparat, tracker apparatuses was put up on North Main Avenue between Parker Street and the Toyota dealership. That gets, that captures every, the speed of every car that goes by in both directions, and then get some data on how we could then address the issue of speeding there moving forward. In terms of some of the other complaints you brought, Mr. Elman, 2090 North Main Avenue, rental registration warning letter was sent. 2812 North Main Avenue, a zoning violation letter has been sent. 120 Troop Street, zoning was scheduled to follow up last week. We're still waiting on what that follow-up was. 122 Troop Street, failed the initial site inspection, notice of violation was issued. The 100 block of Well Street, that complaint was unfounded, no illegal dump junkyard. And the 100 block of East Parker Street, the two tractor trailers were moved. Also, as I brought up in caucus, we're going to request for representatives to come in from PA American Water, the sewer aspect of it, to give us an update on the Birch Street project. I drove down there this past week, and it basically is a launching pad. If you're going over 20 miles per hour, you could get airborne going down Birch Street. So we would, the last update we got in, I believe it was January, February, was that work would be getting to fix the issues there once the construction season started. We're about a month into construction season, I haven't seen any updates there. But that's an issue that needs to be addressed and fixed. So we're going to request that they come in to give us, for a caucus, to give us an update on their progress there. We also discussed in caucus, we got an email yesterday, I believe it was, that PA American Water is going to be requesting rate hikes. So we're going to draft a letter in opposition to those rate hikes. They're going to be requesting those from the Pennsylvania Utility Commission. It was also brought up that we, we had gotten word that PP&amp;L is raising their rates as well. I also have to look into if they could do that, you know, latterly, or if they have to go in front of the Public Utility Commission for that rate hike too. But maybe we'll tie those both in after further review. Just to follow up on some of the requests that I made in the last few weeks. Mr. Waldenberg, I know with 337, 339 Wheeler, that they did put up, said code enforcement advised that the property partially passed inspection and sandbags have been placed. According to the neighbor, the, the sandbags haven't done anything except impede her access to the side of the property, to her side of her property. But there's still water issues there. So if we could just pass that along to...
I'll follow up, sir.
Thank you. And also, we reached out to PA American Water about manhole covers on Karen Drive and Debbie Drive up in the Oakmont section. There were literal holes in the manhole covers. The one on Karen Drive was fixed. And then we, I followed, I followed up with that last week, and we sent a request on Debbie Drive, and they came back and said that they weren't in bad condition, correct?
All but one were in good condition. They repaired the one that was...
That was on Karen Drive, I believe, right?
Debbie Drive.
Debbie Drive?
Karen Drive was fixed the prior week.
So, so they will look at the one on, I'll get together with you after, because I went up there today and took some pictures, and there, there is some rotting in the holes that it's not necessarily like something or someone is going to fall into it, but it could become an issue down the road. And that's all I have for this evening. Mr. Waldenberg?
5B for introduction and ordinance, approving the intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license R.15376. Currently owned by the estate of George Chirkin, Wanda C. Chirkin Administrator, 326 Hill Street, Jessup, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18434, to Clarkes, located 850 Providence Road, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18508, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved?
5C for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with Matthew Domeness to provide finance director services to the city of Scranton.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second?
On the question?
On the question, I can be voting no. I'm not going to go through a litany of the reasons why I'm, I already did that over the past few months, so again, I maintain my no.
Anyone else on the question?
No, other than I will be doing the same. In the last several meetings, I've also voiced my opinions on this.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, and so moved?
5D for introduction, a resolution, supporting the Pennsylvania Commission for the United States Semi-Quintennial America 250PA.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second?
On the question? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved?
5E for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, grant funds in the amount of $68,746,050.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, when, when looking at this, it did come up in citizens' comment. There's 52 line items here on the list, and it's not, I don't think it would be a hard act to, you know, give us a little bit more of a breakdown of what would be considered in, in some of these line items. For example, you know, software upgrades, heating and cooling, City Hall and Weston Field, $75,000. If they could just break that down and say, this much will be spent on this, such and such. You know, home buyer program, $500,000. If they could just break it down, I think with 52 items, I don't think it would be a hard ask, and we'd get a little bit more meat on it.
So what's been conveyed to me is that, you know, in terms of the, any grants that are going out, those, you know, the parameters for that grant money will be sent up to us once, you know, that money is about to go out the door. Or even, when it opens up to be applied for, right?
Yeah, that was my understanding.
And then, and then also, all contracts associated this with, will also come before counsel. It's, you know, it's a, it's a breathing document, basically, that it's going to continue to be adjusted based off alternative revenues and based off of cost. We don't know, you know, what something, what something might cost today, if that's what it's going to cost six months from now. So basically, all this is, is just approving that this much, you know, is going to be put into those, into those boxes, and then the details will be sent up to us as, as that is moved over.
Yeah, I mean, that was my understanding from the backup. And I understand that, that things do change. I mean, I would be able to consider it a draft document, but if we can get just a little bit more on each of those items on the list, I think it would be very helpful.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved?
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file the counsel number 11, 2022, creating and establishing special city account number as noted and titled Finance Director for the receipt of and disbursement of grant monies from the Willery Foundation and Lackawanna College for payment of the new finance director position for the city of Scranton.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A, what is your pleasure?
Like to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Is there a second? No second?
Second.
On the question?
On the question, this also is something I've voiced my opinion on several times. I don't think there's a need to rehash it again, but I'll be voting no for item 6A.
Anyone else on the question?
I'm a no for the same reasons I've been bringing up.
Thank you. This is just a, a ordinance to just create a city account to bring in, to put the money in, and then also distribute the grant money out. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, and so moved?
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, Resolution Number 60, 2022, approving, in accordance with Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended, a plan of financing of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority and declaring that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the city... people of the city of Scranton for the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority to undertake a project for the North Pocono Public Library.
What is the recommendation for the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
Second.
On the question, roll call please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunneham?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, resolution number 61, 2022, authorizing the director of the Department of Public Works of the city of Scranton to sign the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Form M.950AA, authorizing Riley Associates, city engineer, to act as an agent and submit highway occupancy permits on behalf of the city of Scranton.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question, roll call please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunneham?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, resolution number 62, 2022, authorizing the city of Scranton to accept a 2022 Moormax MMV Gen 3 per by board cooperative purchasing contract number 3861 with Atmax Equipment Company from Keystone Sanitary landfill.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of 7C.
Second.
On the question, roll call please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunneham?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 63, 2022, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for the Kaiser Avenue Flood Mitigation Design Narrative.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question, roll call please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunneham?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption, resolution number 64, 2022, amending resolution number 48, 2022, entitled, Reappointment of Jerry J. Weinberger, Esquire, 611 North Webster Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, as a member of the board of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority. Mr. Weinberger's term will expire on December 31st, 2027, to reflect the end of Mr. Weinberger's term as December 31st, 2024.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question, roll call please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunneham?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption, resolution number 65, 2022, amending resolution number 49, 2022, entitled, Reappointment of David Faniff, 1812 Academy Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504, as a member of the board of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority. Mr. Faniff's term will expire on December 31st, 2027, to reflect the end of Mr. Faniff's term as December 31st, 2024.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question, roll call please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunneham?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.
7G for consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption, resolution number 66, 2022, amending resolution number 50, 2022, entitled, Reappointment of William R. Laser, CPA, PFS, CFE, 677 Mary Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18508, as a member of the board of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority. Mr. Laser's term will expire on December 31st, 2027, to reflect the end of Mr. Laser's term of December 31st, 2025.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7G.
Second.
On the question, roll call please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunneham?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7G legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, file the council number 9, 2022.
This piece of legislation is the updated zoning ordinance. It is tabled to allow for additional input and any recommended amendments. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.